Mr. Granger.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Clea.
Here.
Ms. Macbeth.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Charley.
Here.
Okay, so today we have the first draft of the commercial and economic development chapter. So last meeting, we did the downtown section of this chapter and we quit there because that took up most of our time. So we're starting off with the midtown planning area. And what you have on the screen here is the different sections in the midtown area. You'll notice that I did get Seela, our GIS specialist, did complete our maps this morning. So I put them into the PowerPoint just to give you an idea. They're not in there correctly because putting the big maps in there means I gotta move a lot of text around. So in a couple of the maps, you'll see between slides. So this is what the existing midtown planning area map looks like. And it shows you the commercial, the residential, and the different uses on the map. So we've got the arts and cultural district, the shopping center area, the Richmond Road, the residential, the urban residential area, and the university area. So this is the other map, which breaks it down by the use, the existing land uses. So this one will go into the right spot on this back page here. I did go and update on this page, so the size of the midtown area is 151 acres. It's 40% commercial, 8% environmental and sensitive, 11% institutional, 3% parks, 22% residential, 13% right of ways, and 3% vacant property. So I did update that section based on the map, the previous map. So where it says they aren't to, the midtown map will be the other map that I just showed you on the next page. The first section talks about the arts and cultural district. I did some updating on that. Updated the 12 creative economy businesses and the nonprofit Williamsburg Contemporary Arts Center based on information I got from Michelle. And she also noted an artist demand survey completed in art space in 2012 did not show enough demand to finance the live work-work space area for creative professionals in the district. So if there are any questions on this page, I'd be happy to take them before we move on to the next section.
Just as I note, the planning director and planning and buildings director of Blacksburg mentioned the same thing about their arts district, I believe, that not getting much traction.
I think that she also mentioned that it was the cost of renting in those neighborhoods close to downtown, if I remember correctly, and that the cost was prohibitive for artists to actually live and work in the same space. And they were having similar issues with the high cost of housing that we have currently in Williamsburg.
I've got just a very nitpicky style suggestion for when you list the percents for area in midtown.
You want to do them by order?
Like a decreasing order or something like that, just so it's easier to follow.
It was like that in the other one, and I looked at it and said, I bet I get that comment.
I did.
I'll make sure it happens to you in all the other sections of the plan.
Okay, great, thanks.
As reference to that. So that's that map that was missing from the page. This lists the arts and cultural district, and we basically have three vacant properties in this area. You've got the old Taoga site. We have the 727 Richmond Road, which is part of the Casey Field. And we also have the site where the old Super 8 motel used to be that are vacant properties and that are prime for redevelopment. There were basically very few changes to this section. It talks about the medium density, single family, and the business neighborhood district. So this is in line with what we previously have and currently have in the comp plan.
I'm sorry, I was thinking about that last slide where it talked about 727 Richmond Road. Development potential. There's no doubt in my mind that the Taoga and the Super 8 sites are potential development sites. But in my lifetime here, I've never heard the Casey's give any indication of wanting their field redeveloped or anything along those lines. So I don't know that it's, I agree that it's vacant, but I'm not sure that it's something that would be appropriate to identify as prime for redevelopment, at least in my mind.
I think the potential is very low.
Yeah.
And that's currently in the current comp plan the same way. I think it shows that way. And if the commission would like to take that parcel out, I'd be happy to remove it. I think in all, in the development of the property, I think it'll get development as one whole piece rather than a small piece of commercial and the rest being something different.
Yeah, I just feel better about that because the notion that that's gonna get redeveloped anytime soon is not something that's exciting to me in a good way.
So is it the pleasure of the commission to take that out then?
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the bigger picture, and I appreciate this, Greg, is that if the family has not put that with, like Bob Singletary, to think about, you know, finding the idea that we, as the community, are saying, oh, well, that place is, you know, I mean, it's their land.
Yeah, well, I think it's strictly correct that it has potential. I think Greg's point is more, do we run some risk of alienating the family by suggesting that we think it's gonna be developed?
I could see people getting nervous.
Yeah, so I think there's no reason to, there's no reason to call it out.
Yeah.
And it's, people are suddenly approaching them, oh, this is potentially developable.
I think it's zoned that way also.
It doesn't need to be rezoned at this point to be developed. So it isn't like this is a signal for rezoning or something like that, yeah.
Then we'll move on to the shopping center areas and updated this section to include the midtown road development. That's currently under construction there. We've got the 240 apartments and 68,500, and it should be square feet in there. Andy pointed that out, of commercial area. So updated this whole section to include that and part of the center fronts on Richmond Road, which contains 75,816 square feet with a food line and Marshalls. And then unfortunately, Earth Fair is closing down. So I will remove Earth Fair from the grocery store in this sentence. And then we'll move on to the Richmond Road corridor, which extends from Monticello Avenue to northwest to Bypass Road. This is basically updating the existing information in there. I note that the Westgate Motel has a, you can see in the red on there, the parcel. It's prime parcel for redevelopment with this, makes a nice mixed-use project possible. All of these properties have potential for new commercial. You've got the stretch on the right-hand side going out next to the train tracks. We also have the little parcel that used to house the SunTrust Bank behind this store. Staples. Staples and so those are the, I think, the redevelopment potential sites in that small section of the Richmond Road corridor.
Do we have the old Nixon Peter plate on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's that long, that's part of that long skinny one.
Okay.
On the right-hand side of the picture. And I did these maps this way because I thought it was nice to, I took the pictometry and sort of outlined the parcels in red so that people could get an idea of where they were rather than just gave, give a map and you sort of figure it out yourself.
No, this is really useful.
And I labeled it that way also, so you could tell what they were, so.
This is great. Is there a reason that the Westgate is singled out?
I think that motel site has the potential to be redeveloped in the future. So that's why it was singled out in the previous plan also.
I see, so this is a carryover from the last one. I'd missed that, okay.
Princess Anne, is that?
The old Princess Anne Motel, right. And then, of course, they own that big, that large parcel too on the corner on Mount Vernon Avenue.
Right. Right.
And that's currently vacant. Then I went to the university area, which is basically, everyone knows where the School of Education is and the old Hellipad Site. Just basically filled in the information there and noted that the new multi-use trail from Ironbound Road to Midtown Road is due to be completed this summer. A new sidewalks, multi-use trail, and a cycle track are under construction in front of Monticello Avenue and Midtown Road. And also put in here that approval for sidewalk connection from Monticello to down along Compton Drive into campus is in the design phase and slated for construction in 2022. So I added that to this university section because it was sort of college-related with the Monticello Trail and the multi-use path going out to Ironbound and the path coming into campus.
So is the term "cycle track" a normal way of talking about bike lanes? I was thinking of velodrome or something.
This is a special bike lane. So a cycle track is an actual area where only the bikers go. And it's, I think it's 10 feet wide. And it's wide enough so that bikes can go in both directions on the cycle track. And this will be unique, it'll be the first one in the city we've done. And it'll be unique, and we plan to put the green pavement color on it that you typically see with it. So it's pretty identified that it is different. It's different than a multi-use trail where both can be on it. This is designed specifically for bicycles and sidewalks are separate from it, basically.
Right, and so, I mean, I've seen this in other cities, more freely in Europe, but it's like the cyclists have actually right of way in that area. And like, there's stop signs on the sidewalks to cross and things like that, yeah.
But yeah, that's terminology, the correct terminology for what is called a cycle track.
And I assume that'll be asphalt?
Yes, and it's got a coating on it that paints it green.
I know that, clearly I'm not a runner, but I see so many runners walking or running on the asphalt instead of the concrete because the concrete is harsher on the knees and the joints. And I just wonder if there's any allowance for that in regards to runners and sidewalks versus multi-use trails and paths.
A lot of the multi-use trails are usually done in asphalt. It's when you get in urbanized areas that you try to match the material in the urbanized areas. Good example is over on York Street. Part of the site, the multi-use trail is aggregate because it's adjacent to the historic area. And then once you leave that area, it turns to concrete. And then in some areas, it might even be asphalt down. So it depends on the design scheme of what you have in a certain area as to what material you normally use. In front of the shopping center, it's gonna be the cycle track that I think is, I'm pretty sure it's probably asphalt with the coating on it. But the sidewalk adjacent to it's gonna be brick, concrete. So I can't remember which one it is, but usually the sidewalk is different. And it depends on the look of you want to achieve. Downtown, we like brick sidewalks. Other sections of the city, we do concrete sidewalks.
To your point, Greg, and that's why people run in the road.
Right, and so I was, I was thinking, well, if we can design a path for the runners and walkers that they would prefer to be on as opposed to one that they would prefer to avoid, then we're ahead of the game. But there's a balance between the aesthetics and comfort, so.
And I would note that since you brought up runner-friendly, Williamsburg was declared a runner-friendly community by the Road Runners of America in December of last year, so.
Rick Platt was very proud of that.
Unless you have any questions on that, I'll move on to the northeast planning area, triangle. So as you can see, I did update the map, the same on that one that I did on the previous one. I took the green one with the red on it that was a holding place for it. I also updated the acreage and the percentages, and I'll change the percentages in this location too. I noted that the triangle has 10 hotels with 687 rooms, restaurants, an automotive business, retail establishments, a bank, office buildings, multi-use buildings, storage warehouses, and two churches. And when you think of the northeast triangle, it's really, it's Capital Landing Road, Second Street, Merrimack Trail, and Peniman Road, which makes up this part of Page Street also, and that makes up this district as you can see on the map. I think Andy asked me to do a little C on the Colonial Williamsburg in the text there.
I was thinking the same thing, but I was afraid to say it.
It's okay. So I've got that noted on my plan. And this is the existing land use map, so I will add that to the text. I think these maps turned out pretty well because it's easy to see what's residential, commercial, and so forth. Look at them, especially on your iPad.
Sorry, could you go back to that map just quickly? Yeah, that is amazing, see it in that way.
Look at the actual PDF she sent me, it's really, really clear.
What are the bottom two categories? I just can't read them.
Public and semi-public?
I see, yeah. And then the bottom one?
Colonial Williamsburg.
Gotcha.
Parkway or?
It's Colonial something or other.
It's like Colonial Wrestling, but I don't get to.
It's not Colonial Williamsburg because...
Yep, no, because your building's not that.
Yeah, that's right.
I can look at that and see that one, but yeah, I've got a copy of it here, I believe. I'll look at it and check that. Yeah, the fun part of making those maps is shading out the tan color for everything else. You have to do it in phases, she said, to make it work.
You know what it really looks like? If it's the blue, it's sort of Colonial Williamsburg support buildings.
I'll check on that.
Yeah. All I was gonna say is it might, just in terms of, maybe it's too late, but so this reads a little more clearly. The red and the yellow are sort of close to each other. And so the residential kind of blends into the commercial a little bit. And you'd like for the commercial to kind of jump out a little bit more. So I was wondering if the commercial could be that blue, which would contrast really clearly.
Usually planners require commercial to be red now.
Oh, is that right? Well, then, I see. Well, yeah, if there's a convention, obey the convention.
Yeah, maybe we could change one of them to a different color.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
I'd be able to get the residential a little more yellow.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
So the northeast triangle on the next, on this page is basically an update of the existing chapter. We talk about the major commercial and mixed-use areas. We talked about Capital Landing, Capital Landing Road was the second port. Basically, that's the same information with a little update. Looked at the Lord Paget Motor Court at 901 Capital Landing Road was purchased by the city in 2011 and sold to Copper Fox, who redeveloped it into a distillery. The city purchased the Capital Landing Shopping Center, the White Line Motel, and the Country Hartham and Suites. We demolished these two underperforming hotels to allow for future development in the corridor. And Chapter 12 will discuss the infrastructure and transportation improvements in this area.
I remember when Sarah Stafford used to serve on this commission, she would frequently remind us of how this, the northeast triangle had been an economic development and planning priority for a number of years. And I always think of that when we, when we look at this region. What has happened with that kind of, I don't know if I should call it an initiative, but that interest in the northeast triangle?
Currently, the city is scheduled in the next month or two to start the process for Capital Landing Road reconstruction.
Oh, just for the, yeah, okay.
So of course, you know, we did Second Street. We did a road diet on Second Street and did two lanes, a center-turn lane and bike lanes on each side. So the city has hired a consultant, and we are going out to the Capital Landing Road neighborhoods and businesses and trying to get input and information from them as to, do they want a project that's similar to what we did on Second Street for the road design? Also looking at some possible underground wiring, especially if it crosses the street because the right-of-way in that area is very wide. Looking at new streetlights, I mean, I have another project out there with a governor's school student that I've been mentoring since October. And his project is looking at Capital Landing Road. And we've been out in the last week or two doing surveys. So he's created a little survey for his project that is totally separate from the city's project. But I've been out with him to introduce him to the neighbors and to the commercial businesses. And we've talked to all of them now. And I think one of the major concerns that we've got from those businesses is lighting on the street. So they want additional lighting on the street. They like the bicycles, they like new street furniture, new bus stops, those types of things. So I think we're getting ready to start that up with the consultant in the next month or so. You'll see development potential, I think, rise once we do those improvements. I think a lot of individuals in the city also, for the parcels we own, you don't want to start a business on a street when you're getting ready to put it under construction because they're sort of at a disadvantage from opening up a new business and you've got the street torn up in front of them. So I think that's gonna start in the next month or so. And the city has the funding to do that section of the street with grants and city funding. So I think that's gonna happen, and I think they'll help spur the redevelopment of that area. The city is also looking at our signage and signage package, including signs from the interstate all the way down to downtown as to what kind of signs we want to identify in the area. So I think that would also help. Another complaint from the businesses on that street is that signage basically sends everyone up 132Y and doesn't say that there's anything further down than Capital Landing Road. I think those are all initiatives where we've got on our plate as city staff to look at in the next year. So I think there'll be some improvements to that area when some of these things are done.
Okay, thank you.
So if that section of Capital Landing took on a look similar to what Second Street is now, that would narrow that road path.
Basically, the road stays the same. You get a center-turn lane, which takes up a lane. You get a lane, and then the rest of that width is used for bike lanes.
Okay, excellent.
So bike lanes in each direction. And there are some individuals who wants the bike lanes on the street. There are other individuals who say we would rather have a multi-use path. So we're looking at both of those options. Maybe we do it on the street for the avid bikers who really don't want to be on the multi-use path and have people walking in their way. They are really bikers who want to move along pretty quickly. And also looking at possibly doing a multi-use path on one side of the street or the other and still have sidewalks on the other side of the street and try to make it a little more pedestrian-friendly.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's the bottom line, that the expanse of that road is just...
So it's pretty similar to what...
Doesn't invite you to cross the street.
Right, it's pretty similar to what was on Second Street. I mean, we had two lanes in each direction with no center-turn lane. So this does the same thing. You have basically three lanes and bike lanes on each side.
Second Street's big improvement, I think.
The biggest complaint we get on Second Street is people getting access off of Parkway Drive right now. They say it's a little harder because there's a steady line of cars at certain times of the day, not all day. That there's one behind the other, and it's hard to pull out, so.
Part of that is people not a bang, the speed limit, though, too. I don't go over there as much as I used to, but when we carpool, we'll come that way sometimes. It was always really challenging. I used to just go the long way around to get over to Merrimack. But I honestly think it's better now because you're only watching one lane of traffic and not from one side, and now only two if you're crossing versus four before it was real pain.
Turning into merchants is a lot easier.
Yes.
And you also have the option of pulling into the center-turn lane if the other lane's not available to proceed straight out, so, yeah.
You know, the roads over there, because I guess they're of such a commercial nature, they seem stark to me. I don't have that warm sense of trees and landscaping. It just seems sort of barren and very harsh and commercial. So I don't know that there's a way to solve that with more asphalt and concrete, but I sure would love it if that's something that's put into the planning of that as best we can to encourage the business owners to plant some trees and some shrubs.
Capital Landing Road or Second Street? Capital Landing Road, we'll look at landscaping as part of the whole redevelopment.
Yeah, definitely Capital Landing Road. I don't, I can't see a bunch of trees necessarily in front of car dealers and stuff, but it would just soften it so much. And if it's softer, it's more pedestrian-friendly, I believe.
Yeah, one of the, it's interesting to go around and talk to businesses. It's fun for me to get out of the office and do that. One of the, we have the businesses who want less landscaping and the residents on the street who want more landscaping. I think it's an issue too of where we place the trees especially. A couple of businesses said to make sure when we do tree plantings, to pull them back some from the street because when you pull up to leave, usually the tree, even though if the tree grows up and the canopy is up higher, the trunk sometime impedes your view when you're looking down, especially on a four-lane street and the traffic's going 35 miles an hour. It's sometimes hard to see. So I put that in the back of my mind to make sure we check those kinds of things when we're looking at site plans and when we look at the street design and the landscape improvements for Capital Landing Road.
But the trees are, I think, serve many purposes. One, it gives a softer look, but they also, after they grow a little, provide some shade coverage, encourage people to be outside and walking. And it also is a cooler environment. I mean, you can actually see on GIS maps where there are hotter parts of cities and cooler parts are based on, you know, affluence. And part of that is the trees and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, and I think that basically the businesses were basically saying, trees are not bad. Take into account the placement of the trees and where the signage is on the buildings and those types of things. And I think we can all achieve the goal of making it look nice and not block signs and hinder traffic movements too, so.
Crape Myrtles have smaller trunks, and Bartlett Pears have smaller trunks, but oaks typically have big trunks, but it takes a while to get there. So having one street with one variety of tree or two varieties and then another street with another selection might be kind of nice as opposed to, and I guess each business can choose to plant a tree if they want, but if it's a concerted effort, then it might turn out to be something really cool.
Well, I think on Capital Landing Road, we have enough right-of-way that we can plant the trees and landscape as part of that project. So it's gonna boil down to tree types, tree canopies, and placement, I think, of where we do it to make it look cohesive in the redesign of the street. And I think it's all important. The trees are important, sidewalks are important, the lighting you pick is important. Do you want a pedestrian-friendly lighting or do you want a more commercial type of lighting? And of course, all the street furniture, if you add benches and transit bus stop stations, those kinds of things, they all add to it. Streetscape. We have one individual in staff that wants to do a lighted path on... We have one individual on, in staff that wants to do a lighted path on Capital Landing Road. Saigaw. And then I came up with the Field of Lights, if you have...
Oh, yeah.
Would be a cool thing to put down that ravine. An art display called Field of Lights. Of course, it all costs money and it's awful.
Oh, come on, Andrew can make it up for us, come on.
Madam Chair, I'm going to have to excuse myself. I'd like to leave early at my first meeting, that's always a good thing.
Cheers.
Okay, see you next time.
I think one of the main things we were trying to do on Capital Landing Road too is we're trying to think of something as an entrance statement.
Yep.
If you've come into that area when you come off the interstate, that it's different. So, that's one of the goals we're trying to achieve in part of the redesign. Maybe we do something at the corner where the old DMV building used to be or something, some art statement piece or something. But we want something there that sort of says,
You're here.
You're here. And what is the name? And we've been debating that, what to call that area for. Nobody likes the Northeast Triangle or, or Net. Second Street, as I mentioned, we have the improvements on Second Street since the last comp plan. We basically had the Second Street shops with over twenty thousand square feet of commercial area. Thirty-one condominiums has not been constructed. That's the area that backs up from the current area over on Penniman Road. So, that area is still up for development. Second floor of the commercial building, which is sort of over the Velvet Shoestring, does have two condos on it.
Residential.
Residential. Have the Velvet Shoestring, Shoestring, the Koschon and several other retail shops there. It's a map there.
Are the, are the businesses generally satisfied with the redevelopment, with the improvements to Second Street? Are there...
Yeah, I think so. We haven't, Dan Clayton have talked to several people before and after we've done it. I think the pedestrians really like it because, as you mentioned, it's easier to cross the street now.
Yeah.
Because you sort of have at least a safe zone in the middle if a car's coming the other way that you can get across. One of the complaints before was that it was not safe to get across Second Street. And a lot of the businesses that had located in the buildings on Penniman Road that were office-type uses didn't feel like they could walk safely to the restaurants on Second Street. So, I think that's one of the reasons we looked at it and did the road diet on it and see how that works. They talk about wanting a traffic light at Second Street and Parkway Drive. Unfortunately, those, you've got to meet certain traffic counts for that to be installed. It doesn't meet it yet. And I think we're looking at possibly doing another traffic study on that sometime. We're in the future to do the actual traffic counts and see if the, the road improvements have warranted. I know if the, if the, the timeshare development on Penniman Road that was proposed was over there, that definitely triggered the traffic light and that's where it showed up in, in a lot of our plans because that was a way we wanted the majority of those individuals to leave their property, not come up on Penniman Road and try to make a left on Page Street. That actually, if that development got proposed, I believe, had a right in and a right out only. So, you couldn't turn left because we didn't think that was the same. And I think the bikers like the bike lanes on Second Street now. It's really nice that they have a dedicated area that's new and safe for them to, to ride on. Penniman Road basically is, hasn't much happened on that. As I mentioned, the timeshare development has not come to fruition on, on the four hundred units. That is another large site that has large development potential in that section of town, so.
And so, the four hundred unit timeshare development that was approved in two thousand and six, I mean, the development proposal, all the site plan, all the SUPs, the whole, that whole package has expired at this point.
Not yet.
No.
The site plan was approved
Right.
and the General Assembly, since the recession, has extended the approval of those site plans for two years, three years. And it actually, I believe, expires this July unless the General Assembly puts another extension on it. So, the General Assembly basically...
Because of the financial crisis, they were given this leeway, okay.
Typically, a special use permit is good for one year unless you get site plan approval, approval for the development that you got approval for. They got site plan approval and usually site plans are good for five years.
Five years, yeah.
So, because of the recession, the General Assembly, I think they've extended two, possibly three times past that, so.
Because I was wondering why that was still being listed as, I'd assumed that the, all the approvals had expired, so.
Not expired yet.
Jump ball at this point, but it still is, okay.
It seems to be the timeshares are, I mean, I see more advertisements for law firms and such trying to help people get rid of their timeshare. It doesn't seem to be, to be the growth industry that it was when.
Airbnb business.
Yeah, exactly. So, I'm wondering what, are, are they looking at other uses for that? I mean, that's a big, big chunk, so what, what else is there out there?
Now, my development, they're always pointing that out to individuals as a potential site. I think the owner of that site is the same owner that owns the timeshares across the train tracks. And they are currently building timeshares in York County further down. So, this is not one of their areas right now that they are looking at expanding their, their timeshare units, so.
For sale, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's been for sale with a sign on it for years.
Part of the problem, you think, is the left turn on to, from Penniman, known to the, to Page Street. They do that quite frequently, right?
And that's why when we looked at the timeshare units with that much traffic, we had to have a right in and a right out. Can't put a traffic light there because it's too close to the train tracks and you can't see. And we were having individuals go, I think it's called Broadway on that side of the street instead of Parkway Drive. But Broadway came out to Second Street and then there was enough, with this development, enough traffic flow to warrant a traffic light. And that's where we were sending individuals then, Second Street basically, to turn right or left proceeding on into the city or onto right one ninety-nine if that's where they were intending to go that direction. But yes, that is a difficult turn. Another place at certain times of the day. Lunch hour, going home, that kind of thing. So, then we move on to Quarter Path Weinsburg and this is basically same information that's currently in the plan. We updated the Village Green North containing a hundred and fifty-seven units. Our apartments, as you know, has two hundred and twenty-seven units. Just a little tweaking here and there on that. The Battery Boulevard is, of course, you know, is completed. Reed Out Road is completed to the, I call it the dam or to the pond. They are looking at possibly sometime in the near future at doing the next section of Village Green North, which is the, the Townhouse duplex subdivision. So, I think it's possible we'll see something more later on in that. They're also looking at some commercial development. Riverside, what they're hoping the next year or so. So, we might start to see some development, more development in that section.
But hopefully no more reverse parking. The hobby of mine is I cut through to go to Harris Teeter to see if anyone's parked correctly there.
Yeah, I threw it through there today, actually.
That's my cut through to it.
Wow.
To go to waypoint.
You do a silent swear to read on the backwards parking as you drive through.
So, updated on the next page, the water and sewer improvements, the elevated water storage tank information. It's basically the same for, for all of that on the High Street, the Riverside. And I'll put more pictures in here too with the final, next submittal. Getting some good pictures and we'll fill in these blank spaces between chapters with, with photos.
You know if the senior facility is moving along?
I would suspect the next thing they were doing based on council approving the text changes, they'll purchase the property from Riverside will be their next step. And then they'll submit their site plan for apartments and a subdivision plat to subdivide whatever portion they need off of that larger parcel on that side of the street. So, I suspect spring, early summer, you might see something. It usually takes a month or two to go through closing once they were waiting on that approval for closes. So, that's a use that's allowed by right based on the zoning ordinance now. So, just a matter of meeting the ordinance requirements for the site plan. Site plan would come to the commission for approval and the subdivision would also come to the commission.
Like May-June, we'll probably be seeing stuff at our meetings here.
Right. And the subdivision would come because the subdivision ordinance basically says if you can, you've got a lot that can be subdivided into more than five lots, the commission has to approve it. So, we'll move on to High Street. Updated the information on High Street to include the new apartment buildings, the office and retail and restaurant space. As you know, the ninety-six units are completed construction, which is in the middle, which used to be the Townhouse portion. They are now in full construction mode for the two hundred and twenty-three units. They've got the big wall up in the back adjacent to the, the pond. And they're grading and getting ready to do footings for the two buildings and the parking structure that's underneath it. Then we move on to other commercials areas. We've got Richmond Road to bypass, bypass road to Ironbound Road. I sort of outlined that in the, in the text and I noted any changes in there. Last time, we changed the zoning classification and required this fifteen-foot setbacks, which is the same as you see on here. And then the next section is Richmond Road, the west of Ironbound Road to the city limits. I have a map on that. Man, I'm having a really hard time getting that to fit in that space. So, I'm working on cutting it into two sections and putting them one under the other because the stretch is so long and when you reduce it down to what would fit in the space, you can't read it very well. So, in the next draft you get, you'll, you'll see a picture in that section also. We have had some development potential maybe for the small parcel in front of Yankee Candle and the... So, I think you'll probably see a potential site plan come in for that, for a small restaurant. The large empty parcel in front of Yankee Candle is owned by Yankee Candle. So, I think they were holding that for their own development. Moretown Roads, Moretown Road, we, basically the storage facility, the four-story storage facility, they've only built one of the three buildings that were approved for that development. Nothing else has been updated or changed on that. York Street is some updating on that because we, the hotels changed. We now have an apartment complex that edits that. Quarter Path Road and right one ninety-nine. Basically the same with the shopping center. The Harris Teeter in that. Thing I forgot to mention on the Second Street, Capital Landing Road section, I think it, I've been trying to get economic development and other developers that I've been talking to, I think there's a need for a small grocery store in that area. Similar to Lidl, Trader Joe, one of those smaller facilities. And the price point, I think, would be nice for one of those types of stores over in, in that area. So, I don't know if the commission would want to add that as a recommendation or not, but I just thought about it when I was looking at.
You're talking about James, oh, the Harris Teeter site.
Yeah, but I'm talking about it over on Capital Landing Road or on Second Street, even that Penniman Road site.
I would be in favor of us including something like that. I mean, especially once Farm Fresh closed down.
Yeah.
There was, there's nothing close to any of those apartments over there. You'd think there'd be, especially at the price point that Carolyn's talking about, enough demand to sustain that with the apartments plus others. I mean, I would be willing to drive over to Lidl or something over there, yeah.
Farm Fresh is still, that building is vacant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's becoming a storage facility is what it's supposed to be. I don't know how that's moving along, but.
I mean, with the density, with, you know, the housing density there and the lack of a proper grocery store, now that Farm Fresh is gone, it's almost a qualify for a food desert. I mean, you can't go far. And a lot of those folks are dependent upon public transportation, which isn't the best in this town. You know, once an hour, you can maybe get some place, yeah.
I think it would have to be some sort of a boutique grocery store because there is a Food Lion in the James York Plaza Shopping Center. And that shopping center's consistently had grocery stores in from Big Star to Food Lion and a couple of others along the way. And so, something that's unique and like a Trader Joe. So, it's not your normal baseline fare that you, you would get at a Food Lion or what I'm going to refer to as a discount grocer, something special, a specialty grocery store. And I know that we just did the Bodega on Capital Landing Road, which I haven't been in yet. But I don't think that that really qualifies for what we're talking about.
Right. I was looking at, as Mr. Charler mentioned, the number of apartment complexes and the income levels on that, that is a small grocery store, similar to a Lidl or another one on Richmond Road. Aldi's would be perfect in that Capital Landing Road quarter. Those individuals could walk there or take the bus and be able to shop because that's, that's one thing I've heard from individuals who live on that side of the street that says since the Farm Fresh closed, it's a lot harder for them to go and get their groceries anymore.
Let me ask if I may, Moretown Road, next to the storage facility, there are a couple of boarded up houses. Are they in the city or out of the city?
They are in the city, they are part of the storage facility. They own all of those properties. We have cited them for the buildings. And now, I think we're, planning is going to cite them because the uses have expired. Non-conforming use
Right.
of the residential has expired. So, we will notify them that they are no longer permitted uses on the property and see if we can get rid of them that way.
Good, yeah, they're pretty hideous.
Had to wait the two years to be able to do that since they've been unoccupied. Then, of course, we got the South Henry Street, right one ninety-nine. Got the one little office area on there. Next week, we will have, that's the developer that's looking at building a residential, small lot residential subdivision and assisted living facility that will come to the commission at your work session to talk about their potential development and comp plan changes to our comp plan on that. So, that'll be that development across from the, the red box line you see in there. And of course, we got...
Obviously, are you in touch with the folks at the Oaks? I know they, some of them showed up the last time when they thought we were going to get back.
These individuals actually have contacted the president of the Oak. They contacted the Berkeley Associates, who is the manager, the property manager, and got them in contact. So, I had one individual from the Oaks come in and talk to me yesterday. And I, I think you'll see some individuals from the Oaks come in lit... And I think you'll see some individuals from the Oaks come and look at the presentation and probably comment on it next week. I think the Portland folks were also notified by the property associates too, association too. So I think they've reached out to the neighborhoods to sort of say, here's what we're thinking of doing. And, and that was a staff recommendation that it's always nice for the developer to approach.
And Berkeley manages both of those sites, Portland and the Oaks.
Right. I said it's always nice for developers to approach adjacent property owners before any projects come before the city because it gives them time to have some individual contact with the individuals and get their concerns before a formal submittal's been done, so. Then of course we got Jamestown Road and Route 199 intersection. And it's pretty much the same. We will look at that when you see your next draft on the residential section that we talked previously that was an office use. You'll see that in the residential section that talks about a potential change in classification of that, in that section and not in this section. Then we got the three office areas on Strawberry Plains Road and John Tyler, which are small areas. There's not much to, are basically the same as they were in the current comp plan with updated photos. The Monticello Avenue, Ironbound Road intersection is basically the same. I sort of highlighted that. That's what we're looking at as economic development potential in the comp plan. That's right across from Newtown, so that's owned by the college. Prime potential for us to have some really nice development in that section.
Is the college considering marketing that, selling that?
I think their new endowment, their new executive director for.
The Real Estate Foundation?
Foundation is looking. They had most of the properties and had, didn't have, didn't have ownership of a couple of the houses in there and they now have bought those properties also, so they actually own the.
So how is that zoned right now? Do we need to consider?
Nope. I think in the E District, we talk about it in the comp plan. This, we also say that the rezoning is contingent upon the development of the site and those kinds of things as some potential for us to have some.
Yeah, some.
Some say yes to what goes into that area. And then we get down to the recommendations and I just threw some things on here that I thought I'd heard from the commission previously. The downtown planning area. I will update that whole chapter based on our comments at the last meeting and remove a lot of the vibrancy plan and do some rewording on that.
I wanted to just mention on that, you have a lot of the, you've taken a lot of their mockups and all of that. Are we just removing all of that, all, everything that's from that plan?
That's mine.
I couldn't remember what we really finally.
And now they become this appendix.
Yes. What I heard from the commission is to remove a lot of the mockups and the recommendations for that plan. Basically give a general overview of what the plan was supposed to do and reference that the plan is an appendix if someone wants to look at that. And then we go on and discuss what we think downtown should be. As I'd written up with some recommendations we got at the last meeting and just take out that, so there's no confusion that the vibrancy plan and the comp plan are in a mine between and it's hard for someone to determine.
Yeah, the more I thought about it.
Who you're talking about.
Yeah, the more I thought about it after our last, after our last meeting, I thought, I was less comfortable with that. Good.
I've actually started doing that.
Thank you.
So the recommended text amendments, I think we talked about that at the last minute, so last time. I didn't think the commission, let me go back. Got a slide on that. So these were the recommended changes. Three are the churches, and I think we talked about that, about leaving it, not splitting the zoning. And the blatant building, we talked about that also, the zoning. Wanted to leave it at LB1 currently. So, and the governor's end property, we talked about. I have talked to Jeff Duncan with Clonia Williamsburg Foundation. And I think we're leaning towards looking at RDT for that piece of property since the commission didn't want, didn't think commercial was viable on that site. And I think the foundation also agrees with that. And as with all of our downtown zoning classifications, no matter what the density is, the density can be increased with a special use permit based on that whole section. I talked about the design of the building, the design of the site plan, those kinds of things. So I'll get back with Mr. Duncan and if he agrees with that and put that into the plan also. One thing I did want to talk about on the review and consider changes, I think I'll redo this downtown planning area completely based on our last discussion. If there's anything in the downtown planning area that the commission would like to add, let me know. Shoot me an email with it. For the midtown planning area, basically staff thought we wanted to review the materials and colors, especially in the arts and cultural district. An update on that is the design review guidelines are, just started with our first public hearing last night. Staff is leaning towards creating another design district possibly for the arts and cultural district so that we can address some of the concerns in that district. So that'll be done as part of that design review update. I put in here supporting the redesign of the road and pedestrian improvements in the district to include Lafayette Street. Support the intersection improvements for the Richmond Road and Monticello Avenue and Lafayette Street, which right now is looking at possibly it might be a roundabout. Better define the sidewalk improvements, especially on the side streets because we're looking at as part of the Lafayette Street improvements is to put sidewalks at least on one side of the street for all the side streets. So I'll add that better into the district. Is there anything else in the midtown area that you can think of that you would like to add?
I think supporting the intersection improvements is something I'm sure we can all get behind. I'm not sure, I'm enthusiastic about a roundabout at that intersection. And maybe this is not the place at the time to really get into that level of detail on this. But I wouldn't, I would be reluctant to endorse specifically that as a solution for that.
Well, as you see here, it's not, it doesn't say roundabout. So that's something that gets more discussion in the future as we get closer to those road improvements.
I would be on Jeff's side with that when that discussion comes about, when we get a roundabout to it.
I'll be on the other side.
Oh, dope.
I'm with Andy on this one.
Dope.
I like roundabouts.
All right. Well, we're lining up, aren't we?
Obviously divided across the table here.
Well, I think part of the thought too is you could do a really nice art feature
center.
In the center of it as a way of defining that you're in a different part of the city again. So, but I mean, that's ongoing. There'll be more on that, I'm sure, in the, in the future.
Well, I'm persuadable but skeptical.
Northeast Triangle, supporting the Capital Landing Road redevelopment and, you know, the street redesign and pedestrian facilities. Recommend pedestrian and bicycle improvements on Merrimack Trail. I think that's been consistent with what the commission's been saying. And I did add this, support the location of a grocery store somewhere in this area.
I wonder if it's necessary to mention to insert boutique grocery store or small community grocery store of some sort and whether or not we need to mention pedestrian, bicycle and landscaping improvements.
Well, that's all I think in that Capital Landing Road redesign. All of that's going to be in that.
All right.
I can put to include.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I said I could put in to include pedestrian, bicycles, multi-use path. I can add that sort of in parentheses if you like to that section.
For the grocery store, I guess I'd be okay with putting small to, to be consistent with the lot sizes that are there, but I'm hesitant on boutique because I think that implies a price point that might not be ideal for the price point that those apartments are at.
Then here, a couple of things for discussion. Talked about the vibrancy plan, three lots. Been getting comments that do we really want Richmond Road to have the automobile-related uses on Richmond Road? So I threw this in here for discussion to see what the commission feels on that. We have automobile-related uses out there now. Some people think that that's not an appropriate use on the major tourist corridor into the city. So I threw it in here for discussion so that at least we can have that discussion and decide it. And so desired to do that, we can make that as a recommendation. We talked about the comp plan wider site, so you've got that on your agenda for next month. And one thing staff thinks we really ought to support is no many storage use on Richmond Road. We just don't think that's an appropriate use on Richmond Road. And we probably get at least one to two calls a month from individuals who want to do that on Richmond Road. And I keep saying I don't think that's an appropriate use for our commercial corridor on Richmond Road. And it currently allows it with a special use permit. And I just think that's a use that shouldn't be in that corridor.
No, I, I would agree with that. And I think in the past three, four years, we've had a bloom of new automobile service things, which I think has made people feel we've hit a tipping point there. So I would be very happy to discuss that.
I think we've got plenty.
Yeah, I think we're at a good spot with Firestone Tire Place.
Visitors have car trouble, they can take care of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the issue with the car-related uses is it makes, it tends to make, especially when they proliferate, it tends to make streets less pedestrian-friendly. And so we've got all these restaurants. We've got people that can walk from some of the hotels and Skipworth and some of the other neighborhoods that are at that end of town. You don't see a ton of pedestrians on the street, but you do see some. And a lot of car uses are just not really compatible with things like trees, with driveways that are easy to get across. And, and so I tend to agree. I, I feel like we'd want to really justify it a little bit more than, well, we've got enough. Because I don't know what enough is, honestly. But I think enough, based on what, maybe it'd be a way to think about it. And, and I do like, I do like that, that, that stretch really is, it's strong in things like restaurants. I mean, it's strong in, in things that are useful for visitors, but they're also nice amenities for residents. We do need some of these things, gas stations, tire places and all that sort of stuff. And we've got a, we've got some of them there already. I'm just, I'm sort of free associating here to try to find some language that'll, that'll help us justify what I think we all sense is probably the right thing to do.
Yeah, for me, the, the language differentiation is that some of these commercial enterprises go towards being industrial for me. You know, and, and so that, and even versus, you know, commercial is a very big umbrella. It's a big tent, whatever's the metaphor for you. But it's like, for, for me, some of these car places are really very industrial, especially I think the Firestone place where we went through a big thing where we wanted the, the doors down and that they should have air conditioning, but they're not. And so it's like, you know, it's this big wide open noisy air gun, you know, screwdriver things, you know? Noisy place. It's very industrial. And so the idea of walking past that is not a very attractive.
Yeah, you feel like you don't belong there if you're walking along there.
I don't disagree. I also wonder where do we want them?
No. Well, I think we haven't, I think what we're thinking is that we now have enough of that. All the, all of the ones that are there can be there forever. They can change ownership to something else and still be there. But do we want to have three or four more? And I would say no.
And I would like to add.
Be with you on that, that we don't need more, but enough, I mean.
No, I mean, we do need to have some gas stations in, in the city limits. We do need to have some places you can have, you know, your car serviced in the city limits. I prefer Howard on Second Street myself, but, you know? But other people go other places. But yeah, so we have, but do we have enough? And to me, it's a, it's a commercial purpose. It lends itself to be more industrial than what we want the rest of that land to be built up.
I wonder what we can do from a design guidelines, from a landscaping and things to help with the industrial feel of that. And I wasn't part of the discussion when it came to whether the bay doors had to be up or down and things like that. And I've scratched my head and wondered how the employees feel about working in thirty-two degree weather with either paying, somebody paying a heat bill or nobody paying a heat bill. But maybe some of that can be addressed with how it's allowed to be built, even moving forward with what we've got. So that if it's redeveloped, we deal with the industrial side of it as well that you're referring to. As far as the storage, yeah, I don't think we need any, many storage of any sort on Richmond Road. But there, there are probably little places like, I think it's the Magic Touch Car Wash. That's in one of Mark Wright's places near Mama Steve's. That's not, I don't feel like it's an industrial feel to that. But it's certainly not pedestrian-friendly walking past the Goodyear there, right? So that's why none of this is easy.
I would say on that is if you remove the use, existing uses are non-conforming. That's something they keep in mind. So if the building, two years, you lose your. Here the building downs, but that's from a business standpoint, from the business owner. Usually you don't want your use to be a non-conforming use.
Yeah, yeah.
So you might get some pushback on that. So I just want to give you a heads up on that.
Well, what are some other tools that we have?
Currently the uses, the uses for those types of uses is a special use permit. That's your other tool. So as part of the special use permit, you can be cool and say, so maybe we want to.
Change it to permitted with a special use permit?
Well, it's already a special.
That's where we are now.
Yes. Maybe we want to strengthen that language or put some additional language in the comp plan that says we, some, some wording that says we don't want the majority of the corridor or some wording to say that these types of uses don't take up the majority of the quarter and sort of give you some language to help with the special use permit process if the commission thinks it's not appropriate for the design.
Just the city's priorities are for commercial and non, non-automotive commercial and restaurant, what's the generic term for restaurants, in the Richmond Road corridor or whatever the list is.
Hospitality, right.
Hospitality, thank you. Yeah. Hospitality and non-automotive commercial uses, automobile-related uses will be considered, but.
Yeah, so I think we could probably do a little wording in there to help, especially if you don't want to decide not to take it out, but it helps you with the special use permit process that gives you a little more.
Yeah, latitude.
Latitude, yeah.
And, and also people, if it's written down in that way, an app, potential applicant could look at that and say, oh, I see, this is not what they're looking for.
Sort of like a car wash. I don't see a car wash on.
We already have one.
Oh, we've got one at the end, right?
But it's in York County.
Oh, is that right? That's York County?
Oh, it's on the side of the street, York County, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And especially one of those, I call it open-air car wash, where you just pull underneath and you stand there and just wash your car yourself, not inside of a building.
Yeah.
So.
But I, I appreciate the idea that if we remove it, it means that the current businesses become non-conforming. But I guess maybe you could give us a few bullet points as, as we have a packet for our meeting that deals with this that we could chew on these more advanced, you know, prescriptions on an SUP versus removing it and what that would mean. Because I really think that everyone is coming down to saying, we don't want anymore. And the idea that if something was vacant for two years, then, yeah, we probably need to move on, you know?
Necessary anymore.
Right, I mean, as long as the business is operational, it has its right to continue. And the idea that we're protecting against this eventuality of a two-year vacancy and all that, I mean, I'm not sure I want to go on one side of the argument right, right this moment. But let's think about that.
I'm sorry, one of the things that that might get us is, I'm going to say, a subpar tenant, somebody who is undercapitalized, who landlord says, if I don't get somebody in here, I'm going to lose the shoes. I gotta get somebody in here now. It'll be a fly-by-night guy, he'll be there for sixty days. And then he's gone, but then he's bought himself another two years.
Yeah, and that's why I was like, I need to get, I need to chew on this a little bit more, I guess, for going. At least, but that's a great, that's a great point.
The other piece of the puzzle that I wonder is, what can we really encourage to come there? Not just where do we want the automotive businesses to go? But if the street were lined with nothing but restaurants, I don't know that that's really what we're looking for. And so what other type of service business, I say service because we can only buy with so many trinkets in our life, as I think many of our retailers are experiencing. What other things do we want to line Richmond Road? And that's exactly the sort of thing, I think, playing questions you're working on. So.
So one thing to ponder on too, since you mentioned that, is suppose you have a hotel site that gets demolished and someone wants to do a mixed-use property there. I think that's okay. We certainly allow it as one-third, two-thirds, one-third commercial, two-thirds residential. I think you're probably going to see some of that. You're going to see more than just the old travel lodge come down.
Yeah, great.
In the near future.
Great.
So I think I heard you, you're okay with the mini storage use being removed from that zoning classification? And then I added adopting a complete streets policy. I think we need to have that in the comp plan. It'll be probably in this section and probably also in the transportation section. And a complete streets policy is basically looking at all modes of travel, bicycles, pedestrians, cars, all of it. So that's basically a complete streets policy. We'll probably put a little photo of something like that in the plan to give individuals an idea of what that is. Anything else the commission can think of, especially in these areas or any of the other areas that you, that staff has missed that you would like to discuss further or have staff look at or add to recommendations in this section?
I don't hear anyone jumping in, but while you contemplate that before we move on to our next item here. I did want to just, since this was brought up in the midtown planning area with the architectural review board's design guideline review, that's a lot. While I appreciated reading the newspaper article this morning in the Gazette about it, as we move forward over the next six or eight months of that process going on, well, in our monthly packet, we get the reports of basically the subcommittees, including, you know, ARB and that report. Is it possible for us to have the minutes of the monthly design review guideline added to our monthly report so that we can kept abreast of that as it's going forward and not just from the hearsay of talking to Andy or in the paper, right? Because eventually it's going to come to us for eventual approval before it goes up. And I think it'd be nice if we just get educated along the way, what's going on. As, well, it would give us the opportunity to ask what's going on and those kinds of things as we move forward, as well as getting a filter through what is the minutes versus the Gazette or having to attend.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We can. We can easily do that. We, like I mentioned, we had our first meeting last night. It was a public hearing just on the basic review process. I think we had over forty individuals.
Yep, see, they said you had thirty, so.
No, I counted them. The first one was thirty-two and then a bunch more came in after that.
Yep.
Nine speakers.
It was a pretty good crowd. And I think we had nine individuals speak during the public hearing.
But no, I think, I think that would be helpful for us to see, like, who's coming, asking the questions. I mean, and you'll have them, just whenever they get processed through the, you know.
So we, as part of that update, we have divided it into a schedule. We'll post a schedule on the planning website. We also intend to send little postcards to all the individuals who live in those AP one, two, and three and the CP district when they come up for review. So probably a couple of weeks before the actual meeting date for that, we'll mail out the postcards to give individuals a notice that this is happening and if you have concerns or would like to come and see what, any changes or maybe so that they have an opportunity to come and discuss that with the architectural review board. So we're trying to put the word out. We're trying to notify by email. Of course, people who have signed up on the e-notify get notices of the agendas being posted. I'm sure the newspapers will keep running articles on it, which is another good way for individuals to hear about it. And with our mailings, I think that will help. It doesn't get everybody because a tenant won't get the mailing. Property owner will get the mailing. But looking forward to six or eight months going through that process. Staff, even after the meeting last night, we had a couple of individuals that brought in some new materials to look at. So we're thinking about doing possibly a, a meeting where, add another meeting where we invite any of the contractors to come in and put their materials on display. Like if we could get that room next to us, put out tables and have them put their materials on them. And then citizens and board members can walk around and talk to the individuals and look at their materials and see if there are materials that the board is comfortable with adding to the guidelines or if the material is not of a quality that they would want to add it to the guidelines. So I think that's another way of getting more input. And we're looking at doing that probably between the first meeting and second meeting, which is the AP one, because I don't, really don't think there's going to be sweeping changes to the AP one district and the AP two district because we want the board to look at these materials before they start drafting those AP two, CP districts, so.
Like a mini trade show.
A mini trade show, right. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, we're happy, we're happy. Appreciate that, at least I would, yeah. Okay, so I think that probably ends our discussion unless anyone has anything else. Okay, so formally, we have an open forum. And if anyone, Keith, would like to come forward, then that ends our open forum. And so we are adjourned.
We'll see you next Wednesday, four o'clock.